Oh boy. Here we go.
What do you think?
I would like to remind everyone to please make sure that all cell phones are turned to the off position or vibrate position, please. Also, please be advised our city council meetings are broadcast on TV, on Comcast Channel 99, and rebroadcast on WMGJ radio. This meeting of Gaston City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on Assistant Clerk Junie Shavers for the roll call.
Councilwoman Toles is absent today. Also, Councilman Eccles and President Williams. And today's meeting will be chaired by President Protem, Councilman Cannon. Councilman Worthy?
Here.
Councilman Billingsley?
Here.
Councilman Cannon?
Here.
And Councilman Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present and the meeting is open for business. Brian Harbison will lead us in our invocation today. Please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Will you pray with me? Almighty God, we just thank you for the blessings of life today. We thank you for all the folks that are here today. We just pray that you will bless them, whatever needs they have. God, we ask your wisdom and knowledge for this council as they make these important decisions that will affect our city. Thank you for the mayor and his staff and pray your blessings on him. We just pray that your spirit of peace may abound in this meeting today. And we promise to give you the praise for all the good things you're doing, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Chair, we entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session in City Council meeting held on October the 10th.
So moved. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
The Chair, we entertain a motion to ratify payments of the counts for the week of October 5th through the 12th.
So moved. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Number seven brings down the special presentations. I'm going to ask Mr. or Councilman Reed?
Yes.
To go to the podium, please.
At this time, we will have a special presentation by the Gaston Edgewall Patriots Association for our Hall of Honor. John Graham, our chairman, will make the presentation. Citation for Fred Singdon Jr. For all that he has done for the city of Gaston and Edgewall County, serving as chairman or member of many boards, and his continuous help with our youth. In addition, Fred's career spanned a variety of positions that included the following: Labor attorney, Fred Singdon Sporting Goods, Consolidated National Life Insurance Company, Assistant to the Mayor of Gaston, Chairman Gaston Airport Authority, Director of the Northeast Alabama Regional Airport, sportscaster at Gaston City High School and Jacksonville State University TV Network, and the University of Alabama Radio. He was also instructor for Gaston State Community College and Jacksonville State University. Fred also served in the Navy Reserve from 1953 to 1963. He was on active duty from 1955 to 57, and served in Bainbridge Naval Base, Maryland, and Little Creek Navy Base, Virginia. He was a member of the Naval Concert Choir from 1956 to 57. Fred Singdon Jr. is being inducted into the Patriot Hall of Honor on this day, October 17th, 2017. Thank you for your continued service for our community, the state of Alabama, and the United States of America. Yes, sir. At this time, our adjutant Rick Vaughn will come forward and make the award. Fred, if you would, please, come up.
Let him sit for just a minute.
You'll let him sit?
We'll get him up. Yeah. He doesn't need to stand much. I appreciate this opportunity, and y'all kind of forgive me, I just had my upper lip cut from one end to the other, and people thought I wouldn't be able to talk. Well, I guess I fooled them.
You fooled them.
When I was asked to say a few words about this, I thought, well, I know a whole lot about Fred, and I thought I'd talk to somebody else that knew a bunch too, so I talked to our mayor. Because he made the statement that he was a freshman in high school when Fred was a senior. So I figured the two of them might know a little something, being that close to their age. But he said, no, he just didn't remember all that much. But people think the Patriots Hall of Honor, you have to be a war hero. That's not true. You can look up the definition of patriot. Webster's got many different ones. But I'll give you my philosophy on it, which is probably worth about less than a penny. But I think it's meaningful. A patriot is just the average individual that does extraordinary things for everyday people without asking for recognition. A patriot is the man you see around your church constantly, raking leaves, cutting grass, fixing broken windows. A patriot's the man in his community that everybody sees his name in some byline somewhere that he was involved in maybe the development, as Fred, with the airport and things going on. A patriot's the one that works with the youth, taking care of our youth, making sure they're strong, and they understand the basic beliefs of this country and what our founding fathers meant for us to be, that we were to be a group of people working together for one source, not a group of people fighting. Patriot's an individual that is always there for you. He honors his country. He honors his fellow man. He's somebody you can always count on. Most of the time, the patriot is somebody sorta in the back. He's somebody you don't really see that much when it comes to public aspect, but he is always there. That's a patriot. Fred Singdon has been more than that. When you look back at his history with the things he's done, I can remember when I was at Gaston High School, his name was synonymous with football. His name was also synonymous with the kid needed equipment to play football, because at that point in time, you had to supply a lot of your stuff. If he came from a family the other side of the river that needed a little something, go see Fred. Fred'd take care of them. He'd always make sure they're done. He's been a member of many civic groups in this community, and they always, when it's a big task that needs to be done, you can bet money Fred's name's been one of the ones to do it. And I guarantee you, there's many of y'all standing here right now that got awesome stories and tales you can talk about Fred. Fred's a man that stands tall. He's a man that doesn't mind bending over to help somebody that needs help. He's a man that doesn't mind sticking his hand in his wallet to help somebody in need and not ask for it. That's what a patriot's all about, is giving it back. And Fred Singdon more than meets that criteria. And I know there's a lot of people that wanted to be here today, but we did this not because we think Fred's not going to be here November the 8th. It's just we wanted to do it when we knew Fred would be able to enjoy the presentation. If y'all remember, we made the same decision about three years ago, Mayor, four years ago, with the lady who was approaching her 100th birthday, and they said they didn't think she was going to make it. She's still around working harder now than most of us sitting here in the room. So Fred, this might be a longevity plaque, if you would stand now. Max, how about that? Fred, this is your plaque. It's a piece of wood, a piece of metal, and it's got words on it. And it says, "Presented to Fred Singdon on his induction in Patriots Hall of Honor." Fred, like I said, is a piece of wood. The man upstairs, he's got a lot of glory for you for what you've done for people. You're a one hell of an honorable man. And I honestly say this, I feel my life's been better knowing you and working with you on things, and having the privilege to call you my friend. Thank you, Fred. Thank you very much. Congratulations, boys. I really didn't expect this to come off, and I'm sorry that you see me in this kind of position, but let me just tell you, I'm getting better and still working and plan to be working as long as the mayor's letting me. I want to tell you that I appreciate this honor more than you know. I learned a lot in the two short years that I served in the Navy, mainly not to drink strong coffee. That was the first thing I learned. But I learned a lot about people, and I learned a lot about what the military really is all about. I'm proud of the United States. I'm proud of being a veteran. I'm proud of the people that are here today, and I thank each and every one of you for being here. And I also want to tell you that there's nothing in this world that's any as more honor than the United States of America and the military, and we always hold them in esteem. So I thank you again for letting me be here, and I thank each and every one of you for the honor. Thank you so much.
Now we'll come back to proclamations from the mayor.
I didn't really know him too well. I knew the name, but when I was about, I think, 18 or 19, I started playing on the softball team, First City National Bank or something like that.
That's right.
Because we used to play a lot of softball. And also, when I was coaching at General Forrest back from about '68 to '73, you know, we didn't have a lot of stuff, a lot of the kids didn't have equipment. If we needed to buy something, he would always have a little credit. Sometime he'd help give somebody some shoes that didn't have any, and he was just always a big supporter of athletics and kids and the whole city. This says, "Whereas Fred Singdon Jr. served on active duty in the United States Navy from 1955 through 57, and continued in the Navy Reserve until 1965. He was selected All Navy for football in 1956 and for softball in 1956 and '57, and was in the Naval Concert Choir in 1956 and '57. Fred lettered in football at the University of Alabama and received a Bachelor of Science degree from the School of Commerce and Juris Doctorate from the School of Law. He served as Chief Justice of the Student Council Court and was a member of the Student Council. He received a Master's of Science degree from Cornell University in Labor Law and Industrial Relations and was president of the grad students. Fred served as Assistant Mayor to Steve Means for 14 years and is Chairman of the Gaston Airport Authority. He is Director of the Northeast Alabama Regional Airport and has overseen many improvements and projects and redevelopment of the airport. His professional career included serving as labor attorney for Kinnick Copper Company, Vice President of Fred Singdon Sporting Goods, and Vice President of Consolidated National Life Insurance Company. He served as a sportscaster for high school football for over 50 years and play-by-play announcer for Jacksonville State University's TV Network, as well as an evening instructor at Gaston State Community College, Jacksonville State University, and University of Alabama Upper Division. Whereas Fred has served at many leadership positions with the University of Alabama Committees and Alumni Associations, and a scholarship has been named for him through the Edgewall County Alumni Association. He has been inducted to the Edgewall County Sports Hall of Fame and the Alabama Softball Hall of Fame, and has served in professional sporting, church, and community organizations too numerous to mention. The recognition of his military service, professional contributions to the city of Gaston, and extensive community service, the Gaston-Edgewall Patriots Association inducted Fred Singdon to the Hall of Honor. Therefore, I strongly commend the mayor of the city of Gaston to hereby proclaim and want you to enjoin me with the Gaston City Council in congratulating Fred Singdon Jr. upon his selection and proclaiming today as a day of appreciation for him and his service to our country, his extraordinary dedication to our city, and his remarkable personal achievements." So I got this proclamation for you here. Take my glasses. And I got a pen here for you, too. A pen, oh yeah. And then I'm going to give you something else here. Could you hold that, please? Don't do a lot of these. But I also have the key to the city. If it doesn't work, if it doesn't work, call, what's his name? Anyway, call him, he knows how to get in the back door, I think. Anyway, but congratulations. Good proud of you. Yes, sir.
Okay.
All right, Mayor, you got another presentation?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
I'd like to ask, I have another proclamation for Dr. Portia Foster to come up, please. And any of your members who want to come with you. Whereas in 1921, a group of civic-minded business leaders established an international service organization in Macon, Georgia. The founding members combined their diverse talents in friendship and service to improve the quality of life in communities throughout the world. Pilot International is comprised of almost 400 clubs and over 8,000 members worldwide. Pilot International is committed to service in areas of youth development and leadership, brain safety and fitness, and caring for families in times of need. Members of Pilot International strive to further the organization's humanitarian efforts through grants and scholarships to support research, education, community, and caregiving programs. Pilot International partners with Safe Kids Worldwide, Care International, Project Lifesaver, and other respected service organizations to promote awareness for injury prevention and care for those in need. The Pilot Club of Gaston partners with the Edgewall County Sheriff's Department on Project Lifesaver, serving 19 families and tracking devices in case of an emergency. The Pilot Club of Gaston serves citizens at the Snell Grove Center, Bay School for the Developmentally Disabled Adults, residents of five-group homes around Edgewall County, and the Circle of Friends, and residents of the Cusa Valley Nursing Home. Pilot International fosters volunteerism in more than 8,000 young people worldwide through their sponsorship of anchor clubs. The Hoaks Bluff High School Anchor Club, sponsored by the Pilot Club of Gaston, has been named Club of the Year for the Alabama District for Pilot International. The pilot clubs throughout the world are dedicated to meeting the needs of their communities through volunteerism. Whereas the Pilot Club of Gaston received a charter from Pilot International in October of 1936, making this the 81 years of continuous community service in Edgewall County. Therefore, it is fitting that the achievements and contributions of this worthwhile organization is clubs and members be recognized on their anniversary by proclaiming October 18th, 2017, as Pilot Club Day of Gaston and Pilot International and Pilot Founder's Fund Day in the city of Gaston.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for this proclamation recognizing the Pilot Club of Gaston for 81 years of service to our community. Thank you, City Council members, for allowing us this time to publicly acknowledge some of the activities the Gaston Pilot Club is involved with. We help fund the bracelets and batteries for Project Lifesaver to track people who wander off and the Sheriff's Department must find them. We also give free bicycle helmets to children to protect their brains. With more than 8,000 members and 400 clubs internationally, we encourage brain, safety, and health, prepare youth for service, and support those who care for others. We strive to do more, care more, and be more. Thank you.
Well, there's saying that, and I just want to say the council really appreciates all y'all do, the work y'all do here in Gaston, we really appreciate that. They've been around for 81 years, like she said, and it's just a real good organization to support. This brings us down to number nine today under unfinished business. We have none today. Number 10, this is the time and place as advertised, conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution or an abatement of nuisance on property at 1208 Ashley Street in District 2. James Wright and Mary Billingsley being the last known owners. Is there anyone here would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Anyone opposed? Could you come to the mic, please, and state your name and your address, please?
My name is James Wright. I live at 1208 Ashley Street, and I appreciate the city working with me and doing everything they could for me. And I've done everything I can to get things right, because I already have, I said that I wanted to work, and whenever my family or anybody come by to see me, I would have things right. I get up between, I always have got up between 2:00 and 2:30 in the morning, go in, when the Gaston time was, I get a paper and go and read it, and then I go and eat breakfast and stuff. And I have nice neighbors and everything, and we all get along well. If I was retired, so if they was working or anything, well, I'll find out what shift they are, and I'll make sure that I wouldn't go out and disturb my neighbors. And so if y'all give us more time, because I'm at my age, anything done, I believe that's done right, because I know I've got a bit of age now, and so it's gotta be the last chance I have to do it. So if anybody, you know, come around, well, I work sometime at night, because I have a street light where I can do certain things, I get there and work. And so I have statements, well, from the record service, well, they're removing the cars that I have in my lot and everything. That was the dream of my life, to work when I was in school and go and get, I believe in old antique cars and things and fix it up. I wanted to be decent and all. You'll see that I won't, I don't just go get something fancy and all, and I didn't just sit around and do things, I do nothing. When you see me, like, I love trade day, and when I go to trade day, well, I know a good bit about clothes, you might not believe it, but I know a good about clothes, and I have big feet and everything, so.
Mr. Wright, excuse me there. Can you just maybe stick to the point about the house here?
Yes, sir.
If you don't mind, you just had five minutes to speak.
Yeah, okay then.
We're just trying to get to the house part right now, if you don't mind.
Okay then, well, I have statements where they, you know, that I'm working with the things, you know. That's, well, really, I'm, I was just saying, you know, because that was my life. I mean, I want to make sure that, you know, what I could say, you know, if, what I, you know, if that was all then, but if, because that's, that's me for life, to me.
So you're living in the house now?
Yes.
You're living in that house?
Yes, right. Yes.
You have power of water and everything?
Yes, right.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, Mr. Wright, you have anything else?
No, that's not anything else. I appreciate it.
All right, we appreciate you coming today.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone here wish to speak in favor of this?
Mr. President, I'm Brian Harbison with the Building Department. This case involves multiple vehicles and trash and debris and things stored on the property that have created just a general nuisance for the neighborhood. We will continue to work with Mr. Wright. This case started back in August of 2016 unsuccessfully. We've been to court, we have a history of noncompliance for this property. We're asking today for a resolution to abate the nuisance, and as I stated, we will continue to work with Mr. Wright in ensuring that everything is cleaned up and removed, but we're asking for a resolution. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Wright, did you understand what they're talking about here? They're talking about your cars and the stuff in your yard?
Yes.
Not your house, it's just the stuff there. Mr. Harbison said he would work with you and continue to try to work with you on it.
Yes, I have papers here, but God, and we've got two record services and these are doctors, because I got statements, and then we can also, the cram, you can secretly, my have a statement.
Okay. All right. All right. Thank you, Mr. Wright. What is the pleasure of the council on this issue, please?
On recommendation of the Building Department, I move that we abate the nuisance.
Are there any discussion?
I just want to say, hopefully, this is not the house. We're talking about debris, automobiles, and what he needs to clean.
Yeah, that's all this was.
I just couldn't consider, you know, living in the house.
It's abandoned vehicle and junk in his yard, it said, on the recommendation from Mr. Harbison. That's what it was.
That's clear.
It wasn't having anything to do with the house.
Okay.
Any more discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
All those in favor to abate the nuisance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next is a public hearing, a resolution or abatement of nuisance on property at 315 Brandon Street in District 2. Floyd Wayne Holderfield in care of Dr. Maroney, subject to color of title claims of Wayne Layton, Dolores Layton, April Aburl, Junie McKinney, and D.R. Maroney being the last known owners. Is anyone here would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is anyone opposed? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, this case involves a mobile home and some trash and debris in the yard. We started our process in June of this year. There've been no improvements, there have been no attempt nor permits to improve. We're asking today for a resolution to abate the nuisance.
Thank you. What is the pleasure of the council?
On recommendation of the Building Department, I move that we adopt the nuisance. Abate the nuisance.
Are there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
All those in favor to abate the nuisance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next is a public hearing, a resolution or abatement of nuisance on property at 703 Harvey Street in District 3. Tanya Horton being the last known owner. Is anyone here would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is anyone here opposed? If will come to the podium and state your name and address. You have five minutes, please, Ms. Tanya. You have five minutes, please, Ms. Tanya.
Yes, I'm Tanya Horton, and I own seven oh three Harvey Street, and I have pending disability. My lawyer wrote a letter, and I had a hearing, I got denied, but I'm supposed to see her tomorrow, because I'm unemployed. Can I get an extension?
Beg your pardon?
Can I get an extension on this?
Well, go ahead, Councilor.
This is in District Three, and I've had several complaints from the neighbors. Have you even started working on the house?
No, because the house next door, windows is out, that's a big nuisance.
Oh, it's already been abated. We just waiting on to knock it down.
Okay. And oak tree on that property has been tearing up my roof.
Can you, can we just stick to seven oh three, your house, please?
Yeah. Well, unless you give me an extension or something, when I get my money, I can fix it, but if not, do what you gotta do.
Okay, thank you. Anyone here wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we started this process in April of this year. There've been no improvements to the property. There was a building permit taken out in May. As you can tell in pictures, there are severe structural issues with this property concerning the roof and the exterior walls. We're asking today for a resolution to abate the nuisance. Thank you.
Thank you. What is the pleasure of the council?
On recommendation of the Building Department, that we abate this nuisance.
Second. Are there any discussion about this? Being no further discussion, clerk, will you take the vote?
All those in favor to abate the nuisance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution or abatement of nuisance on property at one twenty-two East Longland Street in District Four. Tuscaloosa LLC Mutual Savings Credit Union being the last known owners. Is anyone here would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Anyone opposed to this? Does anyone want to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we started our process in April of this year. There've been no improvements. There are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate the
What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to abate.
Second.
Are there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Do we have a second on number ten? I might have jumped again on that.
We do.
Okay.
Are there any opposed?
No.
Motion carries to adopt.
Our next is a public hearing, is a resolution or abatement, ordering issuance of an alcoholic beverage license, excuse me. The Char D. Major's doing business at Decree Bar has applied for Class One Lounge Retail Liquor License at seven sixteen East Broad Street. Is there anyone here who would be opposed to this resolution? Does anyone here wish to speak in favor? What is the pleasure of the council?
I move to adopt it.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
All those in favor to approve the license, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
The last one's a resolution authorizing satisfaction of a nuisance abatement lien. Roy Wagden has agreed to pay three hundred and fifty dollars to satisfy nuisance abatement lien on property located at thirty-two oh six Williams Avenue. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So move.
Second.
Are there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Do we have any new business today?
Yes, Mr. President, I have two requests from the Police Department. The first one is a resolution authorizing memorandum of understanding between the City of Gaston and Etowah County Commission for the purchase of a bomb squad equipment under the Homeland Security Grant. I ask for unanimous consent. Move to adopt.
We need permission first.
Permission first.
You have a second, okay. Clerk, will you take the vote?
All those in favor to consider the resolution as an item of new business today, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, permission is granted.
I now move to adopt.
Any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Do we have any more new business?
The second one I have, Mr. President, is the, also requested by the Police Department as ordinance, amend in the fiscal year twenty eighteen budget for the Homeland Security Grant program to purchase the equipment for the bomb squad. Asking for unanimous consent.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
All those in favor to consider the ordinance as an item of new business today, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, permission is granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion?
The amount for the equipment is fifty-nine thousand nine hundred and sixty-two dollars.
That was adding, adding those two figures together.
That's the right. That's the top.
Any more discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
All those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Do we have any further new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have a, an ordinance that I'd like to amendment section one eighteen of the Code of Ordinance to include a section parking in the Turntown Historical District. I ask for unanimous consent to hear the ordinance today.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
All those in favor to consider the ordinance as an item of new business today, please let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, permission is granted.
I move to adopt amendment.
Second.
Any discussion on this?
Yes, this is an apartment unit over in the Historical District that some of the people in the surrounding area are having a problem with people parking in crazy ways and everything. It's just one of the ways to keep our communities that are very, very important to these people, and it's important to me also. So I would like to pass this amendment today.
Okay, any more discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
All those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Any further new business? Being no further new business, brings us down to apartment reports, committees, boards. Do we have any today? That brings us to remarks by the mayor and council. Mayor, would you like to go first?
I'll give you a little update. I don't know if you read the paper or saw it on TV, but yesterday, there was a joint meeting at the sheriff's office. The City of Gaston, Etowah County, other municipalities, and other cities and municipalities across the state have joined in with some attorneys on suing about the drug opiate problems we're having, and it's not only here, there, I mean, it's everywhere. And so there's a suit that's going to be filed against the drug companies, and so we're part of it. There's no charge to us. There's several big attorneys from different states and different cities, and it's all going to be combined into one suit. So we're hoping we can get some kind of relief on some of that, because it's an ongoing problem, and it's just really hard to deal with. But just, we'll keep you updated as anything progresses, as I expect it to be sometime, but I think they, they think there's a good chance they can get something done about it. Thank you.
Councilor Worley?
I want to just talk to people and let them know, when you're cleaning out a house, and I'm going to ask Brian to speak to this also, if you can, well, if you clean the house, you can't put a whole lot of stuff out. You can't dump the whole house out. We had a case like this right at nine twelve Tuscaloosa Avenue. A young man just bought it. He lives in Atlanta, but he comes on a weekend, and he cleaned it out, and the neighbors told him he could put some out there, and he, I mean, he put a whole lot of stuff out there, so the city didn't, wouldn't pick it up. So I was getting complaint after complaint after complaint. So finally, I talked with the mayor about it, sent him pictures of it, because people couldn't even walk down the sidewalk, there was so much stuff, and then people went through it. He had it set out there, sort of nice and neat, but then people started going through it and just scattered it everywhere. So I want to see, and Mr. Billy Harris is back there, if y'all can speak to how much stuff that you could sit out before the city won't pick it up, but because we need to go ahead and pick it up, and then what we do is put a lien, a charge to the homeowner. So can you speak?
Yes, yes, sir. So I know I had this once before.
Mr. Hilton's not here. He could, he could probably better address this. There, there is a limit, and I'm sorry, I don't know exactly how much, and I'm not sure it's based on tonnage or weight. Most likely, it's based on how many vehicles it takes to remove the debris. If it takes more than, than a truckload, then what you, what you created is a situation where you're pulling a service away from other residents in that community. If a truck can only make one trip, and then has to turn around and go to the landfill and possibly come back to that same address. My recommendation, if there's a question at all from the property owner, is call Public Works and tell them how much debris you have to place out for pickup. Pickup is free, but if you create a situation without calling where it's going to take away a service from another taxpayer in that same community, then obviously, somebody needs to pay that bill, and it's not fair for the citizens of Gaston to subsidize pickup from one individual who is, for whatever reason, too lazy to pick up the phone and call and ask. And so that may sound a little harsh, but that's just the reality. If you've got a lot to put up, to put out for pickup, my suggestion is to call before you put it out. In the case that you're referring to, I think the property owner actually had to go back and do most of the cleanup himself, and so he's, he's actually touched that debris twice, where if he had made a call, he would have just had to do that once.
So explain, okay, say we have a situation, because I got another one right now, I just passed by this morning on Ninth Street, right up, right up from Adam's Bugs Funeral Home, and they got couches and all kind of stuff out there. So let's say you have to get involved, and we have to do the abatement of it. Let them know how long that's going to take, because you got to send a letter, it's going to take fourteen days, and then you got to take them.
If Fire Department has to get involved with due process, then we have to notify the property owner, give them fourteen days to abate, and then if it's unabated, then we either take the case to the council, which is another ten to fourteen days with setting it on the agenda, or if we decide to go to municipal court, you still have a scheduling issue there, and the municipal judge has limited jurisdiction on what he can order to be done with the, with the debris. The city attorney can probably better address that, but he's most likely just going to fine or levy a fine against the individual, but he, he doesn't have the jurisdiction to order the city to go out and pick it up. So the debris, there we go. We're into almost a month now, and the debris, whatever it is, is still out in public view, and in a lot of cases, begin to obstruct free passage on the sidewalk or even in the, in the gutter where you'll have rain and debris washing down into our storm sewer, which is, which is an A.D.M. issue, and so the best scenario is for the property owner, if there's a question about what you're putting out, please call Public Works. They'll be glad to tell you, and they'll even send an individual out, because they're, they're limited in their resources in being able to, and they want to be able to get around to the whole community, and if they have to spend multiple loads on one individual, that's not fair to the citizens at large.
Thank you so much. Mr. Harbison, didn't run that situation, several situations just like this several years ago, and Public Works came and issued a plea that if you're a landlord and you own a house, and you beg people and you need to clean that house, our first thing you do is call Public Works. Before you put anything out, call Public Works. They will arrange with you a time when they will come and pick it up, so it won't be out there for two or three weeks. But like Mr. Harbison said, you got to call Public Works prior to you putting anything on street. Could we, Mr. Mayor, could we get Hilton or someone from Public Works next week to come and do it again on, you know, so people can see this?
Yeah.
Because I want them to understand, you know, the more, the more we talk about it, maybe it'll sink in.
Absolutely. There's been a few that have just moved out and left a bunch of boxes and stuff, and Public Works picks it up, but, you know, all the other municipalities charging anywhere from fifty to seventy-five dollars to come out, and we pick up free trash, but you got to let us know, and you need to talk to Public Works, just like they're saying, so they can come out and look at it, make sure they get it, but if you just dump it out there and leave it for a day or two, then we're probably going to get it. I'm asking Lee on this, and whatever the cost is, we'll take a lien on the property. Would that be correct, Lee? Yeah, okay.
I want to jump into the fray.
Okay.
The ordinance, it was by rule of thumb, a pickup load. That was it.
Right.
If you had over a pickup load at one time, it was charged per pickup load.
Right, right.
Well, we went along fine with that. The problem was, we didn't enforce it. So anything Hilton says next week, we need to enforce the ordinance we're talking about. Otherwise, we're going to have piles, like I saw in your district.
Yeah, right. Now, I know we had this problem before, and they, and we had, you know, they came out and they was able to get what was right there on the sidewalk, but see, they had so much stuff piled up in the yard. Then we had to do an ordinance to get, to get the city to go and pry the property.
If it's that way, we'll go, I'll say we go ahead and get it, and then we'll deal with it after.
Right, just send the, you know, a bill to them.
Well, in that same ordinance, you have a situation where all they got to do is call Public Works, get a permit on large sofas and this sort of thing. That's separate from the pickup.
Right.
And I think Brian did a good job explaining to that point, but Hilton can get down to it. But I say again, everything we say, everything we do, if we don't enforce it.
That's right.
It's not worth it then.
That's right.
Okay.
This ordinance has been on the books probably seven or eight years, one pickup truck per household that keeps that driver of that truck right there, where he can continuously ride. If we spend, one truck spends a half a day at one house, the rest of customers, the rest of people, and neighbors are not getting picked up, so that's not fair for them. But we do have an ordinance in place, and as far as I know, we've never even enforced that ordinance. Nobody's ever charged anybody for any of that kind of stuff, and we do not pick up building material from contractors.
Right.
If you're a contractor and you put out a pickup truck load, we're not going to get that.
Yeah.
We do not pick up contractor stuff.
I think Brian made all that very clear going in. Now, we get Hilton up here next week, let him go down to the nitty gritty.
Contractor's responsibility to take it to the landfill. Eric, on ninety-nine, if you would put that down real plain, where people will understand and make sure they see it, please. That'd be good.
I don't understand why they hadn't actually been enforcing this ordinance that's been on the books. I mean, we need to find out why they're not enforcing it, we need to see who's going to enforce it, and, you know, stuff like that. When Hilton comes, I guess he can tell us next week who's going to enforce it and how much the fines is and all that. Councilor Bilency?
I had one more thing, I'm sorry. We have an emergency home repair program that Community Development does on the third floor, and then, I don't know the number right offhand, but you can call two five six five four nine forty-five hundred. That's the.
Four five three two.
Four five three two. That's five four nine four five three two. Now, you can call that, and we'll spend up to five thousand dollars, or four thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars, ninety-nine cents, that'll put a roof on or anything like that, so if you know of anybody that's in need of a roof, or some work done in the inside of the house, or the exterior of the house, you know, get in touch with Ms. Baker up in Community Development at that number. Thank you.
Also, too, on that stipulations, one of them is you can't have a grandchild living there under twelve years old. Is that still correct, Mr. Harbison?
They do have to qualify for the law.
Yeah.
Right. It's different, you know, they have a house, you got to make a certain amount, under a certain amount, and you would have to pay it back, but it has a household of four, it goes on from four to three, how much you can make in that, in that household. And then if you qualify, you may have to pay it back, but it's over time, over a five-year period, and then some of it, you don't even have to pay back. Most of it, you don't have to pay back. If you live in it for five years, every year, they will deduct so much from it.
They deduct twenty percent for every year that you're there, so if you live there five years. So if you live there five years, it's free. Councilor Billingsley?
Yes, the SPAN program, which is a program for at-risk youth in our city, is having an open house Thursday at 11:00 a.m. at the old Gaston High School. It's the cafeteria. And this is a program where they're trying to help youth that are in trouble to try to get back into society, get their driver's license and things like that. It's a good program and I would hope that people go by and check it out and see what they can do for that program. And on this trash pickup, we've got to find out from Public Works, too, what, you know, they're going to pick this trash up and it don't look worse than when they came and got this stuff. Had an incident last week and I told it to the mayor, they came and picked it up, but it looked worse when they left and before they got there. So, you know, we've got to clean this stuff up in these older neighborhoods. If we're going to try to keep it clean, then Public Works is going to have to do what they're supposed to do as far as picking this stuff up. And those scoops will pick up a dime probably and they just need to take their time and do it. Guy came by my place last week and just looked at it and kept going. So, you know, we have to do what we have to do, make sure that these people do what they're supposed to do. And that's all I have.
Councilor Reed?
Yeah, I just want to remind the people in District Seven, we have a dedication on the market at Bellevue and Mitchell and the Warner Temple. We want to have just group of people and be dedicated as to Bellevue pilots, it's just a main block, part of the lookout mound. And I do want to say the pilot club, y'all do great. You do everything. But let me say this to you. The last time I had anything to do with, they put makeup on me, a red wig, they put high heel shoes, I had stockings and a miniskirt.
That was ugly. Probably was an ugly sight.
Who was ugly?
I was so ugly, Robert Avery quit. I mean, it was pitiful. Y'all do great, but I do want you to understand that I'm not a candidate anymore.
I wouldn't have told him that.
Hey, man, I got to dance. I got Miss Congeniality, too.
If he doesn't give a donation, he'll have to do it again, isn't that right?
I will donate. Not blood, but I will donate.
Is that all, Councilor Reed?
That's it, babe.
All right. I just want to remind everybody that the 26th of October at 5:00, we will be having the treats on Wall Street. We expect anywhere from 3,000 to 5,000 kids. We've got, as we speak as of today, we've got 1,100 hot dogs. I'll be cooking them on a grill out there by the gazebo. Somebody will be singing at the gazebo. There'll be all kind of folks giving out candy. There might even be some face painting this year. There'll be some blowups for the kids to play on. It'll be a safe environment. Just come out, October the 26th, it's not this Thursday, but next, from 5:00 to 7:00. Does anybody else have anything else? Make a motion with your ear. With your ear.